And as required by the open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audio tape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. I see no interest in that. I'd ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move to our, was our standing agenda item, Joe, on where we are in the sewer, other than they're banging around my house now all day long.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, with the board's indulgence, what I'd like to do is use this time to also bring the board up to speed on a meeting that occurred today with several parties. And at the end of it, if I don't say it specifically, the expectation is that they would be an agenda item next week for the board to have an opportunity to further vet what I'll update you on, and also get feedback from the community at large. So what that's a reference to is we had our monthly meeting with the contractors last week, and meeting with Robert B. Hour regarding Contract One. As everybody now knows, they're now progressing to the intersection of Route 39, Route 137. By the way, I'll just start out by saying the information that was put on the police department's Facebook page was confusing, so Lieutenant Sullivan was updating that information to be more accurate as they progress to that area. The intersection is not going to be closed, per se, but there are going to be detours and instances where traffic will be stopped. But there's better information that was put on the police department's Facebook page this evening than what was out there earlier. But it was that discussion about the intersection work where Robert B. Hour advised the town, CDM Smith, Weston and Sampson and others assembled, that once they concluded that work through the intersection, they're now in the final stretch of that particular contract, and specifically Route 137 heading towards Pleasant Bay Road. And so they're asking the town to consider a number of options, several of which would include closures of Route 137 from the intersection through Pleasant Bay Road at certain times for certain lengths, and obviously, that's a far bigger issue than what was brought up last week. So based on that discussion, working with Charlie Sumner from Weston and Sampson, the Chamber of Commerce through Cindy Williams, and President of the Chamber of Commerce, Abby Hour, we were able to assemble a meeting today where staff met with Robert B. Hour, CDM Smith, Weston and Sampson, and many of the merchants along the Route 137 corridor to start getting feedback on what may occur in that corridor for this work. In addition to that, Charlie Sumner has reached out, and we'll be meeting Tuesday and Wednesday of this week with both representatives from the Lighthouse Charter School, as well as representatives from St. Peter's Lutheran Church. So obviously, the major audience missing from this discussion are the residents in the town generally, but certainly residents that live along that corridor. Really, what the issue comes down to is, in the contract, it states that wherever and whenever possible, travel lanes be included where they're doing the work. Robert B. Hour, if I may state their case very limitedly, I think would say, if that's a word, that they're not convinced that they can do that. So we are having frank discussions about the concept of wherever possible. However, I did advise all of those assembled that I think the potential impact in the community as such that it would warrant a broader discussion through the Board of Selectmen at your meeting on March 9th. And so I would be asking the board to support an agenda item in that regard on March 9th, for you to hear feedback from all of those constituencies that I mentioned, as well as any folks that are hearing about it for the first time by me stating it, including the board members. Staff has already been working very diligently on presenting background material, and I'll be doing a recommendation memo to the board as to what I think appropriate next steps are. I also advised all of those assembled that one of the options the board may avail themselves of is to redirect the issue to the town administrator, excuse me, the acting town administrator, and I'm prepared to do so. However, I did think that this is big enough that the board should be aware of it. You're going to hear about it one way or the other, and I did promise all of those assembled that I would alert everybody to this issue. So obviously, no decisions have been made, nor would any decisions be made unless and until the board had a chance to weigh in on this. However, we are mindful from the contractor that they are soon encroaching upon that work in that area of town.
Thank you, Jill. I know of particular concern is the Harwich paint, and their fear that it basically would close them down for not a few days, but several weeks or months, which would, you know, in our Cape Cod seasonal culture, business would be not good, to understate it. Now, is your intent to come back next week with some options then to?
Absolutely, and that's what you'll see in the packet. Again, from my perspective, it's a simple reading of the contract.
Yeah, you can come back to it. My other question is, in timing, when will Robert B. Hour, when will they start the 137 work?
So we agreed that they wouldn't start anything until we had a chance to vet this in a more public venue. So they wouldn't be doing anything unless and until the board had a chance on the 9th to weigh in.
Yeah.
And they've been planning accordingly. In fact, I believe the three-week look ahead that I'll reference tonight incorporates that reality.
It's not to state the obvious, but we need to work with Robert B. Hour, you know, great reputation, great company in town, but we can't afford to close down a business for extended periods of time either. So I'm hoping we figure something out.
I'm confident we can, and again, it was, I have a list of the attendees for today. It was, I think, a very comprehensive list, a great group, and they were very willing, as we would expect, to give feedback, and I think it's fair to say that those folks are willing to continue to give feedback, especially directly to the board.
Any other questions? You want to continue on with your?
I can't, unless there's objection from the board when we do our agenda bill, I was going to recommend that this be a matter that come up on the March 9th agenda under public hearings and presentations.
Yep.
Not that it would be conducted as a public hearing, but.
Yep. I assume there's no objection to that?
No.
I don't want to speak for the mistake you make, speak for the board here, but.
Thank you, then I'll proceed to the updates. So the first one is for Phase Two, Contract One. Again, this is the work that's being done by Robert B. Hour. The one-week look ahead for the week of March 2nd, Main Line Sewer Crew Number One is continuing gravity sewer installations on Alexander Chase, Spencer's Trace and Hall's Path, and that crew is also working with subcontractors in and around that Route 137, Route 39. Their Main Line Sewer Crew Number Two continues the work on Route 137, and again, as they proceed towards the intersection, there is an expectation that on Tuesday, March 3rd, the intersection will be impacted directly by the work. They're hopeful that they can conclude that within a day or two, a business day or two, depending upon how quickly they can get that work done. We don't expect weather to be an issue, so that should be helpful there. Their two-week look ahead for the week of March 9th, again, Sewer Crew Number One would continue on gravity sewer installations. Next week, they're looking to finish up on Hall's Path and then proceed to Christy O'Beth, and right now, they're saying quite simply that they would continue work on Route 137. Again, not to the point that we just discussed, they wouldn't proceed until that matter's cleared up as to how extensive it'll be.
So Joe, if I may clarify that, you say this is incorrect. The note I got this afternoon was they were going to close down Oak Queen Anne and 137 and Oak Queen Anne and Church Street. That is not correct, and that's?
So I believe that one. They may be getting to the RJV update, which I'll get to.
Okay.
RJV had asked for a detour, and I'll have an update in a moment.
Okay.
On that one. And then lastly, for Robert B. Hour, the three-week look ahead of March 16th, again, they would continue work on Christy O'Beth, and remains to be seen what the work they would be doing on Route 137 at that point. Again, there's an expectation that they will be working on Route 137. It's a question as to how extensively and how long. And then for Contract Number Two, which is RJV, so for this week, they are continuing their work on both Southwest and Northeast Drives, which are requiring road closures between 137 and Church Street. The two-week look ahead, they would expect to continue to work in that area, again, road closures. The three-week look ahead is starting sewer work on Church Street, and they were talking about road closed between Bay Road and Queen Anne. At the conclusion of the meeting that we had today regarding the merchants and the Robert B. Hour work, staff had a chance to speak with representatives from RJV. They had requested a significant detour in that area. We asked them if it was absolutely essential, they indicated that they could hold off. So RJV and Robert B. Hour are working with staff to limit the extent and the number of detours. So at this point, we think we're okay, given where they're all working. And mercifully, that would conclude my updates on the weekly sewer.
Thank you, Jill. Any questions, comments for Jill? Anyone in the audience which would follow up?
Can they do?
Excuse me, you have to use a microphone and identify yourself?
Yeah.
We're on TV, so you need to be famous.
I hope not. Hi, I'm Marguerite Heffernan, and I live off Long Pond Drive. But can they do any of, from 137 to Pleasant Bay Road at night, instead of having to do it during the day?
I can, that question, we've asked them that. It's a matter of, it's apparently much more expensive to do the work at nights, but that's one of the options that are being considered?
No, maybe just some of it at night, just because the, you know, that's the thorough field from Route 6, so that's going to be a pain.
It's a good point. That's one of the, I haven't been privy to all the options, but that's when it comes up. I know we came up right away asking about that.
Okay.
Is that correct, Jill?
That is correct.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, we'll move to public comment.
I'll be really quick. Pat Burchi from the Alzheimer's Family Support Center, and I just wanted to mention, we're here to ask for you to vote to approve the Dave Bertwell Memorial Walk for Alzheimer's that we do every year. And it's been going on about 10 years, but about four years ago, the Bertwell family started to raise the money and give it to the Alzheimer's Family Support Center, because we're operating so much on the Cape. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, and I brought a handout of all the services we have with some numbers of how many people we serve, especially in Harwich. So if I could just give them to the selectmen and leave some back here, I can't do that.
You sure may.
Shaking your ho. Okay.
Ed's giving his permission, so I guess you can do that.
Who do I ask permission of?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So the walk is May 9th, and come out, because Ed cooks the hamburgers, so, okay. So, but I really do seriously want the town to realize how much the Alzheimer's Family Support Center provides through the COA to the seniors in Harwich.
What we will need to do is we'll add it to next Monday's agenda, so we can take a formal.
It's on here.
It's on here. I'm sorry. Consent agenda. I gotta head myself, so we'll take a vote tonight, and good luck with the walk. Good job.
Thank you. Well, come out. Do you want to have a hamburger?
We did last year.
Good, thank you.
Absolutely.
Anybody else for public comment?
I don't know if it's public comment, but it's something I want to address the void.
Yep, go ahead, please.
And not without glasses.
Oh, yeah. I see Steve, I am D, I forgot that already.
All right, so this is the first time I've done this. There we go.
Hi, my name is Lori Jelbert, and myself and my husband Steve live at 24 Church Street in Harwich. We also own an adjacent lot, number 10, where the town supposedly plans to build the pump house. I have been trying to get answers to my questions about the project by coming to the town hall, calling, writing, and I'm unable to get answers to my questions. I'm here to ask those now and expect to get answers to these questions. I did not receive notice of the takings, so I submitted records requests to the town, to which I've also not received a response. What is the basis for the value the town assigned to the permanent and temporary takings of my home and property, including the lot? What is my resource if I disagree with the amount I am to be compensated for, for the takings? Will the town assess the lot and home differently once the pump is on it? Where will it be situated on the lot? What are the dimensions? How much road frontage is it going to take up? Will it be in compliance with the Harwich zoning? When will construction begin? How often will the town assess the pump house once it's built, for any water, sewer or other work, including maintenance? What are the plans for maintaining the pump house once it's built, ensuring it does not become an eyesore? Is there any chance that it could be located elsewhere for X across the street? If the lot becomes unbuildable due to the lack of road frontage, the town will need to buy the entire lot at fair value, and we need this to be answered in a timely manner? Or are they going to give me in writing that it is going to be a buildable lot? In closing, I just want to say that my husband has been battling cancer for the past year, and we simply don't have the bandwidth for chasing this information down, and I've been here several, several times. We have spent all savings trying to keep our heads above water. This land is what we have left. This directly impacts our lives and our financial well-being, so I would really like to get answers to my questions and resolve any issues that we have with the pump house project. Stephen and Lori Jelbert, thank you.
Thank you. I actually thought all those questions had been answered, and all these properties we've are worrying about the sewer pumps on. But let me ask you, could you leave a copy of the questions with our town, interim town administrator, and we can follow up?
So if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
This is a potential pending legal matter.
Okay.
The town's aware of it. We're working with town council. Town council will be working with the complainant's attorney. When this came to my attention about a month ago, a month and a half ago, I became aware that the green card was not returned, if you will, on the easements that were sent out in the summer. Town made efforts to resend that. It was my understanding that it had been resent. So I can follow up on the notice where a lot of those questions would be answered, but it is my understanding that it's a potential pending legal matter.
Okay. So we'll have to follow up in that manner at this time? But thank you for your concern. We'll go from there. Megan?
Hi, I'm Megan Eldridge. I'm the health director. I have two announcements tonight. The first is that we do have a vacancy on our board. The board of health is one member down currently, so if you are.
For another 10 minutes.
If you know anyone with an interest in the board of health, we.
Excuse me, I take the blame for that, Don. I asked her to make the announcement, she's in front of the microphone.
We'll play it back after this.
And then the second, as the health department, I wanted to address the town regarding coronavirus. If you've been living under a rock, you wouldn't know about it, but coronavirus is rapidly evolving in the United States. I wanted to quell any fears. We only have one confirmed case in Massachusetts as of this afternoon. It's in Boston, it's the same case that has been quarantined over the last couple of weeks. Apparently, the person is recovering nicely. The State Department of Public Health does have test kits available at the state lab, and those test kits are now going to be available to healthcare facilities, so they'll be able to test for the virus now in Massachusetts. Something that, some important points to give you is, this is a respiratory virus, just like flu, so it's transmitted person to person. There's important things that everyone can do to protect themselves. Avoiding close contact with people who are sick is very important. Staying home if you're sick is also very important, so you're not spreading your germs to other people. Covering your cough and your sneeze and your elbow using tissues. Cleaning surfaces frequently that are frequent touch surfaces, doorknobs, candles, desks, your telephone, think of anything you put your hands on throughout the day, and use a disinfecting wipe to clean that surface often. Washing your hands, we can't state that enough. Hand washing, soap and water at least 20 seconds. Make sure to get all those surfaces on your hands. That's a great way to prevent the spread of germs. If soap and water's not available, using an alcohol-based hand sanitizer does work as well. And as I said, this is rapidly evolving, so even tomorrow, there'll probably be new guidance on travel restrictions and who needs to be isolated and quarantined. We are not following anyone in Harwich right now. I know there was a rumor this afternoon about that. I am not aware of any active surveillance of anyone in Harwich regarding coronavirus. Again, that may change with travel restrictions that the CDC is putting out nearly hourly. There was a press conference even late this afternoon that said that they were changing some travel advisories from South Korea, and I assume they'll be changing them from Italy as well soon enough. A note about face masks. Face masks are useful for people who are sick. They can prevent a sick person from expelling the virus in their breath through coughing or sneezing. They are not useful if you are not sick. So I'd like to tell people, leave them on the shelves for the people that need them, healthcare workers, EMS, fire, people that work in the hospital who work around sick people need to wear those masks to protect themselves. But if you yourself are not sick, there's really no point in wearing a mask. So try, try your best to just social distancing, doesn't mean don't go out in public, but it means be aware of people that are sick around you, stay a safe distance away, wash your hands, wash down surfaces that are commonly touched. It's a good idea to update your emergency plan. We're treating this like we are treating a seasonal flu pandemic. It is a different virus, but we have plans in place for that. It's very similar. Don't go out in public if you're sick. There aren't any vaccines available currently for this. We're not anticipating an emergency dispensing site or anything like that at this point. All information will be available on the town website. We'll get in touch with Channel 18 to make sure we have the most up-to-date information available to the public. And I wanted to assure people that we are prepared. The Health Agents Coalition has formed a subcommittee. We're meeting weekly to go over updates throughout the Cape, and on that conference call is the state, the hospitals, EMS, so we are connected with all the people that need to be connected. And that's, that's all I have for you right now. I just want to let you know that the website is going to have some valuable information on how to prepare.
Thank you, Megan. I think, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, a lot of people are aware of this, including the younger people, because I had a conversation with our 12-year-old over the weekend. I just wanted to broaden out what you said a little bit while you're here. As far as I'm aware, and I made this comment to her, is that I don't know of any cases on Cape Cod, never mind Harwich, because people do travel around.
Yes, that's, that's true, as far as I'm aware. I would be aware of anyone who's been monitored or quarantined or isolated in Harwich. I wouldn't be necessarily aware if someone's being monitored elsewhere. It's only the confirmed cases that I would know about.
It would be helpful if the county actually had that up on their side, because the one thing that is more epidemic, if you will, in a situation like this is rumors.
Right, right. So right now, I want to stop the rumors. We do not have any quarantined people in Harwich. Okay?
Thank you, Megan. Joan and Nora?
Mr. Chairman, just as a follow-up, Megan has been obviously very proactive on this issue. She's also established, we'll have a meeting next week, would move it up if necessary, but we have a meeting planned for next week of staff related to emergency management services to discuss this. And as she said, we would be treating it at any other pandemic if need be. So steps are being taken, and I think everyone can take comfort that the right people are having the right conversations at the right time.
Let me just note that I got, as I'm sure many people did, an email from Mon Moi Regional School, that they also have a plan going forward of what, even worst case, if they had to use the computers and ask kids to stay at home. So they've followed through in the same way we have in town, to be sure that.
Yes.
You know, their message is the same as yours.
Yes.
Take reasonable precautions, but calm down, but they do have things in place if needed.
Yes, and the schools, I've been in contact with the school nurses as well, and told them, and they've told me how they've been handling things, we're just, we're able to make sure we're following the proper guidance.
Don't forget the charter school's located here.
Yes, they are on the email list. And the tech school, yes.
Chief?
Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
We're in really good hands.
Yes, we are.
She has a handle on this, she knows where all the schools are. She knows, she's got it. She's got it. But just to reinforce what she said, don't go to China, Iran, Italy, Japan or South Korea.
Okay.
And if your great aunt wants to come from Italy to say hi, sorry, you can't come. Wash your hands, cover your mouth. If you sneeze or cough, that's kind of how I was raised, and stay home if you're sick. To reinforce what's going on here, there's a bit of a panic going on, for whatever reason, is that we are having trouble now getting the supplies we need to do our job. If you can't keep your police and your fire healthy, we're in trouble, and that's, that's where I'm concerned. When I'm going to go on a trip next week, and I went to two stores to just buy some sanitizer, they're all gone. Everybody needs to just take a breath here, relax. I need you to trust your government, your local government, your county government, your state government, and your federal government. They are truly on this. Again, Megan has this. But when it comes to a point when the guy that does our ordering says, "Chief, I'm running into some problems here with masks and some of the sanitizers that we use many, many times a day," that's a problem. So help us, help you, by not overreacting. Please, I implore you to not overreact, because we need to do our jobs.
Not to be flippant, but maybe a good time to turn off TV. I turned on.
I listened to a nationally renowned doctor, I listened to a nationally renowned doctor, and someone said, "What should I do to deal with this?" And that's exactly what he said, "Turn off your TV."
As I turned on one station, it basically said the world was coming to an end, as we know it. Again, so.
And we'll be back right after this ad.
Emily?
So I'm coming with a happy change of pace. Emily Mitchell, Council on Aging Director. I am excited to report that our next volunteer recognition event is happening this month. It's going to be March 24th, a Tuesday, at 11:30 a.m., 11:30 to 1:00 at Jake Rooney's restaurant. So it'll be a nice plated meal for all of our volunteers. I'm thrilled to report we have about 90 active volunteers, without whom we really could not provide the scope of services that we offer. So I'm excited for this event, I'm thankful for the work that they do. I have invitations for each of you that I will bring up, and I hope to see you there on March 24th.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Thank you.
Or announcement?
Hello, board, and good evening, selectmen. I'm Patrick Otten, 49 Kendrick Road. I wanted to share with you an announcement of a community forum that's scheduled for March 12th at the Harwich Cultural Center Auditorium. It'll be a discussion about our municipal water and waste disposal, just how good is our water? A lot of people react on assumptions and beliefs, Harwich has the best water, but then I hear, Harwich water's no good. I drink Harwich water all the time. I only drink water out of bottles. You know, it goes on and on. So I've asked Dan Pelletier to come and talk to Harwich residents at this community forum about the quality of Harwich water, how's it tested, how often is it tested, what standards are being used, and just what it takes to bring us the water that we have in our homes. Along with that, I also asked Don Link-Hoper to come and talk about the DPW and his job in managing the transfer station. Everything we touch ultimately ends up in the trash. We throw it away, whether it's packaging, whether it's a vacuum cleaner, whether it's your TV set, refrigerator, it all gets thrown away. But where is away? Away is not here in the Cape, it's elsewhere. So I've asked Link to talk about his job and how the transfer station works. What are the economics of handling our trash? Specifically, I also want to know, what is recycling? So, I've asked Link to talk about his job and how the transfer station works. What are the economics of handling our trash? Specifically, I also want to know, what is recycling? What is recyclable? What isn't recyclable? Again, there are a lot of different beliefs going around. Oh, I can recycle this plastic. Oh, I can recycle that. But can we? Is it truly recyclable? What are the costs involved in how we handle our trash? So, I've given you, and I have more handouts announcing this event for March 12th at the Harwich Cultural Center, which is the old middle school on Sisson Road. It's Thursday, 6:00 to 8:00. So, it's going to be a question-and-answer session, both with Link and Dan speaking. Okay? So, you're invited to attend.
Thank you, Pat. I do need to comment. I think someone just said our water may be bad, may be good, may be bad. Our water is good. It's tested not only for the normal, but I think a year or so ago, we tested for PFOS and some other chemicals just to double-check that. So, we are in great shape with our water.
And we all need to hear that, right?
That's why I didn't want their statement to get out there without at least some clarification.
Right.
Just a quick note, in case you didn't catch it, our group that does Know Your Town.
Yes.
There was a very good program this past week, which had both Link and David talking about both our water and the transfer station and so forth. It's great that you're doing a second one, because
This will be an evening.
It was a wonderful turnout. There really was a very good turnout and a lot of good questions. So, that program is really very good. But the more we can get people to understand how these departments run and the services they deliver, it's great, so.
We shouldn't just stop here. You know, we need Megan as well. You know, what is your job? What does she do? Then we can get a better understanding
That's great.
How we live here.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you for that, Pat.
All right, thank you.
Any other ones for comments, public hearings? We'll move on to a consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Vote to accept the resignation of Matthew Cushing, MD, from the Harwich Board of Health effective immediately. Vote to approve Caleb Chase's fund request in the amount of $500. Vote to approve the 36th Annual Cape Cod Gateway MS Bike Ride, June 27th, 2020 through June 28th, 2020. And vote to approve the Burtwell Memorial Walk for Alzheimer's, May 9th, 2020, at 8:30 a.m. going until 4 p.m.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Megan ducked out on me. She made a comment before, but I would like to make a further comment, because she and I have talked about this. Whoever it is that replaces Matt, be aware that because it's the Board of Health, we're looking for a doctor, a pharmacist, dentist, somebody involved with medicine in one way or another, even public health. But if you fit that loose criteria, we'd love to hear from you, because we need some serious people, and their work is very important.
Right. Thank you, Don. Any other comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
On then to new business versus vote for appointment of James Armstrong to Board of Appeals as full member. Don, you
I'd like to move that the board appoint James Armstrong to the zoning Board of Appeals as a full member with a term to expire 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Don, you wish to take the next one as well?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend to the board, or I moved that the board appoint Brian Sullivan to the zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate member with a term to expire 2021.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Someone want to take C for me?
Want to take my point? Vote to approve
Someone move.
I move that we approve the Hall Kart Inc.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't
Weekday and Sunday entertainment license for go-karts, 9 Sisson Road, Harwich Port.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Anyone in the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
And the next one is vote to approve Grand Slam Entertainment, Sunday Entertainment License for bumper cars.
Move we approve the Grand Slam Entertainment, Sunday Entertainment License for bumper boats battling cages, zip line, and arcade at 322 Main Street, Harwich.
Second.
Actually, though, it's 322 Route 28, Harwich.
Yes, it is.
Are you voting for the zip line, you think?
No. We'll strap you on.
Mr. McAnus is right, and that was my second for Route 28.
Okay. Any discussion? Second. Anyone in the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Then on to old business, we have, I put a memo in here on the confidentiality process, and I think this is self-explanatory. In the past, we've had discussions about the importance of this, of all the applicants, their information being treated confidentially. And we've had some discussion whether Selectmen should be able to look at those applicants. Had a good discussion, I think, was it last week with the search committee, with our legal counsel there as well. And as I stated here, although not an absolute, the town council impressed upon us that we have to take all the tests we can think of to be sure that these applicants are treated confidentially. The other discussion that we had is that the process we've put in place, we appointed an excellent search committee, and they should be allowed to do their committee activity without even the appearance of influence from the Selectmen. And so that they would look at that and do their job. In this memo that's in front of you, I do remind you that we still have some power here. We appointed the search committee, get a broad base, and we also will, in the end, we'll decide on who we want to offer the job to. What we've asked the search committee to has come with some recommendations. So, I ask you if you have any questions that's not clear in my memo, but I'm hoping that you will vote to, in concurrence with my suggestions. I did get a, Michael was one that I think was concerned about this. I did get an email from Michael. He's unable to make it here tonight, that he was comfortable with this and agreed to it. His concern is that he wants to be sure that the search committee look at all the applicants, that we don't allow, or don't have the consulting firms screen out, and so they may screen out the top some other number, and then not, and the search committee not look at those. They want to be sure, even though the, well, I'm repeating myself now, that they do their job full bore, even though we asked the consulting to give their recommendation.
I believe if you look at their proposals and through the comments that were made by at least the two that did present, they did all agree that all resumes received would be shared.
They did, yes.
So.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to talk to something that isn't in this at all, and it should be, that there is going to be confidentiality for the people who aren't going to wind up being finalists, because it's important to keep, and legal counsel has concurred that that's true. But you're doing the deliberations in executive session, and rightly so, because they fit under that exception under Mass General Law. But don't fall into the delusion that anything you say is going to be totally private forever, that nothing is ever going to come out, because when the finalists are put forward in the executive session minutes, you know, come out, if you say anything at all in the executive session, it will become public at some point, except for the names of the people who were involved. So, it's extremely important to understand that the executive session doesn't mean that it's never going to get to be public. The minutes have to reflect what went on, so make sure that you understand that they'll be public at some point.
A good point. We follow under that. I have asked Anita, our town clerk, to be the keeper of the applicants, and so they will be, she'll keep those. And are there any other comments? I've asked for a motion to agree to this.
Move that we accept the town administrator's search committee confidential process.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Any discussion in the audience? Not, Norm?
Fire chief, a police chief, two Selectmen, and a state senator. We're independent thinkers, and I can assure the board and I can assure the public, we will not be swayed. We understand confidentiality from many different places, but we are there because we care deeply about the town, and I can assure you, Mr. Chairman, and the board, and all the folks, it will be independent, it will be fair, and it will be done right.
Yep. Thank you for that, Norm. We're not actually questioning that, but I appreciate your comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It may not be necessary, but that does clarify it, so we all know where we're going. We now have to review the consulting firms that have sent in their, I guess none of them actually showed up tonight to make a, to present their wheres, have they?
Not that I see, no.
Okay. Well, so, I'll take some comments, and then we'll vote on who we, I'll take a nomination for who we want to select. Someone want to start?
Sure.
Don, I'll
Thanks. What, I saw to greater and lesser extent in all three of these things, and I just wanted to bring it up. I guess it's a sign of our times, but we, you know, they're all calling for screening of the applicant's driving record, their FICO score, a number of other things that I just want to make sure that whoever it is that gets hired has an understanding that those aren't ranking elements, that if indeed somebody has a 740 credit score versus a 710, it's not going to assure that he's going to bump past somebody in their thinking, that this is just due diligence, so that if somebody's got a bunch of OUIs, a bunch of bankruptcies that we know about it going into this.
See, that's just standard background check. I mean, that's what that is.
Oh, I get that. I just don't want it to be part of the rating.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't think these folks would allow that. I mean, that's why they've been selected, the people who they are.
Not worried about them.
As Norm pointed, yeah, but they're going to be reviewing, so, you know.
Don, other comments? I'll turn, you'll need, Ed?
Yeah, you know, I read through all the packets, and you know, we, they had two of them present here at a previous meeting, and based on all that, I'd make a motion.
Sure.
I'd move
We can still discuss it.
Oh, we can still, I can find. Yeah, yeah. You know, based on my view, I think the proposal by Community Paradigm Associates would serve the town the best, and I'd move that we enter into negotiations to conclude a contract for them to provide search services.
Is there a second?
I'll second, sure.
Okay. Stephen, so we can discuss.
Couple of things. One, two of them did indicate the cost. A third one did not.
They did. It's in the, they sent that to me as a separate letter.
Okay.
And I, but wait a minute. I scanned it, and this is a test to see whether you read all the pages of your document.
Are you sneaky, Larry?
Because I didn't get it at the first time, and then I scanned it and sent it to Patty. So, if you look in the packet
I'm just going to ask you, are they in the same category?
They're in the same, they're all in the same ball.
So, let me just tell you that that is at the, that number, the $9,500 in number, is at the low range of all proposals that I've seen. When you had asked me to go out and find out what people would charge,
Yeah.
This is at the low range. So, that's a good thing.
The range we have on these, if you look under there, at the bottom, Patty said, stuck it out at the end because of the separate letter, but it's
Yeah. Just a couple other comments. I, you know, I was underwhelmed by at least one of the proposals, and maybe even two of the proposals, to be very honest with you. The one that Ed has brought up, I think, is the best proposal, most comprehensive, has the most recent experience on Cape Cod, three towns born Brewster and Province Town. And I have spoken with people from those towns who said their experience was excellent. The only one concern I had relative to that and the other proposals was while they said they'd work with the Selectmen, they would work with the selection committee extensively, taking guidance from them as to how they wanted to set up the interviews and so forth. There were some proposals to do open public meetings and have anyone that wants to come talk about what we need for a town administrator. I think the reason we selected this committee was to do that.
Yeah.
So, I think that would not be a useful waste of, a use of our time.
I agree. We, it has come up, I think, two of the three make a point of saying that they're going to have some form of community input.
Yeah.
And I don't know, we talked about that, not sure what that entails, whether that means that we provide a way for them to bring information to us, to bring forward.
No, they
I think I'll leave that to
Yeah, I think
Between them and the search committee.
Yeah, I think the search committee, you folks
How they sort that out.
Can make a decision about that, if you feel it's helpful, obviously.
And I understand your concern. I also want to be sure that this is not seeing like we're avoiding any
Yeah, but I
Action. I think we spoke quite frankly
To me, yeah.
To Mr. Chairman that night about our feelings about that, that the agendas will most likely reflect some open, before we go into executive session, an open session that would, that folks could come.
That people can attend.
But it will be brief.
Yeah.
We understand what
Norm is
We understand. We know what you need, we know what the folks need.
And Norm is, surprising to all, can be pretty direct when he
No.
And Linda can too, so they explain that part, they explain that part to me. When I looked at it, you know, I agree that they've, Paradigm have had, they worked with Brewster recently, with Province Town, good success. And one of the things I was looking for on this evidence of, I wanted to be sure that they used, they had a broad enough network and were able to do the, for lack of a better term, the grunt work to elicit candidates. I know Linda's, Sabula's in the audience, we were on the search committee the last time, and initially, different companies, because these guys are new, but I was disappointed, had some discussions with them, because they seem to rely almost solely on advertisements rather than networking. My sense is, in this endeavor, the advertisements are, you sort of have to do it, but I'd be surprised if they get any results. It'll be, you know, calling people up and doing the hard work. And these folks, I had to get some impression, we're willing to do that. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I totally agree with what Stephen said. Essentially, based on all of the individual threads, we may want to talk to them before they go off with the committee. Have total faith in the committee, they're, they actually are a part of the community, they've been part of the community for many years, and they understand what's needed in the position, so that part I understand. The search firm has to kind of understand that this isn't what they typically get involved with, where they deliver you somebody in front of the Board of Selectmen. What we're asking for is for them to cast the widest possible, and that aggregate as many people that they can find, turn them over to the committee who has an understanding of what's needed, and thank them for their service. It's not so much of that middle part that they're normally used to, where they go through things, and they give you maybe eight or nine people that you can interview, because those are the ones they determine. But I would like them to hear that from our mouths, and the chair is correct, too. I mean, these guys are going to do more than just throw a couple of ads in a newspaper, because we could do that.
Yeah. We'll proceed now. Michael couldn't make it tonight, and, but he did send me an email with his preference is a, preferences of Paradigm Consulting Firm that we've talked about.
Yeah, he told me.
If there's no more discussion, and we'll, you know, there's going to be, this is a work in process. I think, I'm picking on our two members of the search committee. You're meeting next, what date?
25th.
The 25th. And so, we'll keep in touch, and I'm sure part of the discussion that was, that they'll have with the consulting firm, and Don, to your point have with the consulting firm, and Don, to your point, this is one where we may want to work interactively with the search firm, is to refine as much as we can what our, what our profile is, you know? We've taken stab at I D Raps and some stuff, which he's commented on, that's fairly broad, maybe we want to have a joint discussion to try to refine that some, to help solve going forward.
I, I think these folks are more than willing to help with that too, so, yeah.
And so we'll work on that, so. But it's a continuing process, and our, I think all of them have given us about a three to four months time span to get it done.
Yep.
And that's what we're, we're looking for. I will comment that we want to move forward, we have, we'll have, I think, move as quickly as we can. You know, two aspects of that is, is we do have an interim town administrator, we have, I keep saying this, we have a great town staff, so we, we can take some time to be sure we do it right. The other factor we're all worried about is, is coming to town meeting, but whoever we hire is not going to be in place and time to affect town meeting anyway. So let's not, you know, concern ourselves, other than let's get, as you folks have said, let's get the right person. So, no other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll, Joe, you can mentally re-return now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move then to, thank you for reviewing this, and we'll follow up with, I'll follow up with Bob Lawton, who's covering this, to contact and work out the agreement with the consulting firm. Next on the agenda is the town administrators' reports and its contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize, my copy is in your signature folder. The contract that you have in front of you...
You want the signature folder back?
Thank you. So, the reason why this is on the agenda in the manner in which it is, is the contract obviously is for, under the, the $25,000 threshold that I, as interim town administrator, have the right to, to sign. However, I did make a commitment, make a commitment to the board to make the board aware of contracts that I've signed, but also to let you know that this is the second type of contract that has been offered to this firm. So the total amount that we're paying to them is now in excess of $25,000 by, by virtue of this contract. Again, really, it's, it's there for informational purposes, but to alert the board that it has been executed, and generally speaking, we're now at a, a higher dollar amount, even though it's two different, completely, two different, completely separate contractual The only item I would have on the budget timeline is just to remind everybody of the up.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I took notes, and I left them at home, but now, just for clarification, this, the funding for this comes from a 2020 town meeting article?
I'm going to have to rely on Mr. Howell's copy here. I believe that's what the...
I think that's right.
Correct.
And the total amount was around 105K, 104 and change, maybe?
Correct.
And so this is the design portion of that.
That's correct.
And you're still comfortable that we're, we're going to come under the hundred, the total amount?
So far, so good. We believe we are on track. Yep. Through conversations with staff.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? If not, all in favor?
Hi. There was no motion.
No motion?
We need a motion, don't we?
Normally, there's a motion first.
There's a motion, okay.
I, I move that we accept the GEI Consulting's contract for Round Co., Vote Ramp Reconstruction Project, 16,900.
Second.
Second? So I'm on the line now, everyone?
Second.
That will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving ahead.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. Again, on the budget timeline, just to remind everybody that this Saturday, March 7th, will be the annual presentation of budgets by departments to joint meeting about the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and I will be making contact with the Capitol Outlay Committee as well, just to advise them of that, to see if they'll be present. I will be meeting with Capitol Outlay throughout the month of March as well as a concurrent action.
We haven't always had the Capitol Outlay Committee in this meeting, but I, we've had at least one, one members, we've got another one here, but I thought it's important that they be invited to attend, and I've said that we have limited time, but I'll certainly entertain questions as we go forward, because they're an important part of our discussion as well. Okay?
Yeah.
Excuse me.
I have a question, because I have property, 16 acres of property that are budding me, and I've gone to the assessor's office many times, because I don't want the land to be developed, but the land that is marked off to, I don't know when it will be developed, the property owners are in a miscellaneous file, so there's no knowledge of who owns the property. And according to the town assessor's office and the building, it's, the building inspectors or what they are, have stated to me that when, when property owners have chosen to put their property or unknown properties into the miscellaneous files, the town does not have any access to those property or landowners. And I said, well, you know, if there's a fire or an emergency, and that's, you're telling me that, that the town has no knowledge of those persons owning the land? And I said, well, then how do you know taxes are being paid on them? And they said, we don't, we have no knowledge. And to me, since I'm abutting this 19 acres of land, I feel like I'm paying taxes on this property, and ever who's marked it off, the town does not know. So, my question is, why in the 21st century is the town still allowing miscellaneous properties to be accessed? And if there's actual landowners, then why, how do they know or acknowledge that they have paid property taxes on this land? Now, 10 acres of this, 19 acres has been marked off, and since the town does not know who those property owners are, how are they going to acknowledge that they've paid, paid taxes on this property? You know, so I look at it that it's lousy bookkeeping. And they don't know how many miscellaneous properties there are.
Unfortunately, you raised a subject that's a sore point for us, has been a sore point for a number of years, and that is, how do we find out so-called owners, unknown owners of property? And we've, through the years, we've hired attorney help, it seems to be a long involved process. We're still trying to go through that. I, I think the best I can do right now is, if you could leave us with your, the property, if you can try to do that, but it's, it seems to be, I'm looking for help here, if someone can, because it seems to be much more complicated than I can figure out.
You don't, you know what? I'll come in tomorrow, I can, you know, have your name, I'll go down to the assessor's office or the building, and they know, they know the land that I'm, I'm talking about just because I've been in here numerous times talking to both.
What part of town this is?
This is right by Cape Cod Tech. And the habitat for housing abuts this land, and the same thing happened with the habitat for housing on Oak Street, that no one knew who the landowners were, and I'm a butter of the land, and all of a sudden, we were notified as the buildings were being, just about being put up, that the habitat housing was going in there. And no one knew, and we went to the town, and it was all classified as miscellaneous ownings. So that's eight acres right there, and now, we have 10 acres that have just been marked off, and the town has no idea of who the landowners are. So it's like, almost 20 acres of land have been, well, the 10 haven't been developed yet, but when you consider the eight or 10 acres that, for habitat, that was developed, that's 20 acres of land. And I have owls, foxes, eagles, turtles, living on this land. So, you know, you're going to allow that land to be developed, because it's, and I've lived, my neighbor has lived abutting this land for 35 years, I've lived there for 25.
Yep. Come back and, but it is a problem we have trying to identify so-called unidentified property. It's, it's not as easy as it seems, apparently. You go through the old files, because we have a long history going back, maybe since colonial times, of trying to sort it out through families, and it turns out to be more difficult.
Well, I can tell you the mark...
We don't need, we don't need, we can, we can, we're going to be here tomorrow morning, if you stop by, we can continue.
Yeah, but I can also tell you the landmarkings on the post, the polls that have, you know, the pink flags to mark off the property lines, or whatever what they are, it says CB land. So I don't know who CB is. So, I don't...
Follow up with staff in the morning?
We'll follow up. We'll, we'll follow up and see.
Okay, so I should come in?
I'm just saying, what you have is a, is a problem generally we have in town, and actually across the Cape. You know, they all blame it on the fire, and the Barnstable Courthouse in 1700s, they lost all the records and stuff.
Right. But see, I went to the Barnstable Courthouse, because they asked me to go to the Registry of Deeds, and the Registry of Deeds did not have anything.
No, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll follow up.
Okay, okay. So I should come back in tomorrow morning?
Uh, well...
He has to have a talk with staff tomorrow morning.
He's going to talk to staff first.
Okay, so why don't I keep using my phone number, and then you guys can...
You can do that.
Right after the meeting, I'll catch up with you.
Okay.
So the next item I have, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, under the town administrators' report. As you may recall, my budget message, I talked about a temporary and until further notice hiring freeze. However, I also mentioned that that was separate from any searches that were underway. I'm very pleased to report that two of the searches that were underway have been completed. One of them is for a part-time program aide at the cultural center, the other one is for a part-time weight room clerk at the community center. Carolyn and I had a chance to discuss this on Friday, she was good enough to bring the folks in, had a very nice meeting with each of the two recommended candidates for these positions. My question really for the board is, I just wanted some guidance as to, I know there was discussion before, but where these are part-time positions, is this something where the board would be invoking the 14-day right of affirmation? And separately, we're prepared to do offer letters pending background checks. So I did want to use this opportunity to get a sense from the board as to how you'd like me to proceed when it comes to part-time positions.
Don, it looks like you have a sense of this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris had a problem getting his head wrapped around this. The charter provision for the 14 days was really a buyer's remorse clause. It was, it was designed so that if, if you found out after the fact, after you hired somebody, that somebody was not adequately performing, that the board threw a four-fifths vote, this is non-department head, they could reject the person within that 14-day period and essentially return them. It is not an affirmation, though. We don't have to affirm that after the 14 days is up, absent an action by the board to reject them, they're hired. I mean, and they're part of staff.
Yeah. No, I agree with that. We'd actually tried to make it a little more proactive in the past, just so we knew what was going on, I think.
But as I pointed out to Chris, that wouldn't have stopped the board from taking an action within the 14 days, because you can't revoke that.
I think, I think, Joe, if you could just provide us information of what, who's hired, and send us an email on that, that we have 14 days to, to react.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing, though, is we...
Hire and then give us the name.
Yeah. So, because what we'd like to do is, we'd like to have them start as soon as possible. These are positions that have been open for several months.
As I understand it, our direction is clear. Go ahead, and then just give us the names for information.
Absolutely, will do. Thank you.
And background.
And again, we're very excited about these two individuals.
You don't look that excited.
Well, you know, if you wanted it to eliminate that, that possibility, you could present their names in a proposed motion that we rescind our review...
It's just window dressing, though, because if, if you found out something that you didn't know, you still had the right in 14 days.
Steve, you have an opinion on this?
I'm, I'm fine to go ahead.
I'm fine with hiring them, just give us the information.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate that, we're very excited. That concludes my report.
Okay. Selectmen's report, Steve?
I'm, I'm done.
Wait, it's news.
Ed? Don?
Just encourage everybody to make it to the polls tomorrow, selection day.
That's right.
Carry it with democracy.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is one of those, I'm going to say it, but I'm not expecting an answer for things. You were here last year when I asked these schools to provide me with overhead expenses, and I'm still waiting from last year for that, but I do remember them promising they would give us a final redline version of the proposed Montemoy...
They did, yeah.
They did say that, but...
They did say that.
Does anybody have, have any remembrance of them putting it in our mailbox, and I just missed it, or?
Well, Joe, you and I will talk about it tomorrow, and I, we'll contact the school and see if we can...
I had an opportunity to speak with the superintendent Friday evening, we're going to be following up this week.
Because I do remember they're agreeing...
I know the deadline was February 28th, and to my knowledge, we haven't received it yet, but I'm hopeful that we will very soon.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was mostly for Steve's benefit.